Okay, good. Okay, good evening. It's 6:02. We're gonna get started here with our committee, the whole meeting tonight, so let's please, well, we need a call to order, so we'll call, please.
Mr. Fleck, Mr. Guerin, Mr. Gentry, Mr. Quagliano, Mrs. Melendi, Mr. Troy, Mrs. Meyerino.
Okay, we have a quorum. If we could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic through which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Item three is public comment. Do we have any public comment tonight?
Seeing none.
Searching high and low, there are none. Okay. Move on to item four, which is the Human Resource Committee. So Mr. Gentry's not here, just myself and Mrs. Melendi. So, Melendi, I'm gonna let you. Yeah, you're gonna do this.
Board dot one, want to hear reports update. You can have your questions there.
So just some quick updates. We are closing out the hiring season for the 1920 school year and got most of our positions filled. Still a couple out there lingering, but interviews are set up and will be mostly staffed when students arrive in a couple of weeks. And I've got some insurance rates that'll be coming to us here in the next couple of weeks that will be coming around to the board, probably not in August, but probably in September.
Okay. Mostly or fully? Okay.
Swarted very carefully.
All right, so it's true to what you said, okay.
Any questions from anyone? Okay. That's it for that. I'll do legislative too.
Yep.
Okay. Legislative update, we really don't have one. It's summer. It's the session is on a break. We go back in veto session in a couple of months, and I believe State Board of Education's working on the priorities. So we'll just wait and see what the priorities are. I don't expect them to change. So that's that, and I'll hand it over to myself again.
Yes, keep handing it.
Communications and public engagement, six dot one, thought chain, exchange agreement. Dr. Rowe?
All right, thank you. Mr. Trump, if you could get the television keyed up. I'd like to take you through an activity. I sent you all an email, so as I gear this up, you can participate in the activity, whether you're in the device or on your phone, it doesn't matter, and we'll put it up on the screen so that you can all see the activity live and watch along with us. Principals went through this exact activity at our recent retreat. Thought Exchange is a two-way community engagement organization with an online platform that will allow us to seek open-ended feedback from the community and actually allow the community to submit that open-ended feedback. I'm plugged in, yes. That open-ended feedback in 150 characters or less. It's much, you know, kinda like a tweet. And what they do is, is the algorithm behind the scenes, we could ask the community a question about, say, trust in the district, or the biggest issue they'd like us to address in the district, or a building principal could ask questions of their staff about culture in the building or how to handle any particular issue. The question that I pose to principals and that I'm gonna pose to you tonight as a part of our activity centers around our strategic plan, so you can see what this interface would be like if we engage the community. What happens is, is as a community member, when you engage in the activity, you are asked the open-ended question. For instance, ours is, as we work together to build alignment between the school district plans, our strategic plan, what are our challenges and opportunities to connect the district plan with the building school improvement plan? So I posed this question to the principals, and they engaged in the same activity. And those open-ended responses, you can list as many opportunities as may exist from your perspective, and then you move on to step number two, and you can then vote on all responses that are being collected from community members or teachers or whomever is participating. And those receiving the most votes, votes bubble to the top as ideas that come back to the district for us to consider of how the community feels about a given topic. It's a really interesting way of gathering feedback, one that's much, much better than a survey, that we're actually getting open-ended feedback without giving them answers that they get to choose from. We're getting real-life, new thoughts from the community. A great way that we'll be able to utilize this will be in our strategic planning process, that as you know, we've just begun, our facilitating team meet met last night for the first time. And I think that if with this tool, we'll be able to engage the community in a way on a deeper level, especially for those who don't want to come and engage face-to-face, which we know is a very common thing nowadays. People would much prefer to engage online. So a potential tool in our toolbox for us to engage the community at a deeper level. So in the introduction, if you click okay on participate, you're then are faced with, or are given the question to answer. Now, I've taken this a number of times, so I can pass it and move on, and you can see some of my responses that I submitted at the retreat. So I can then add another response as you did. And then I can move ahead to then go star some responses, and I'm given a number of, as many as I want throughout the process for me to vote. And if I were to look at, we have an opportunity to keep language consistent with District 158 strategic plan, and then the second step would be of an idea as to how that can be put into action. And if I like this, I'm gonna give this a four, and then the next opportunity, and then the next statement pops up for me to continue to vote. And I can vote on as many as I like. When I get bored with this, or I believe my opinion has been heard, I can move on to discover. And then as you, you know, I can see 552 stars from all of the principals and cabinet, as well as anything that you starred here tonight, and I can go through and start to see what are the most commonly voted on topics. And we can see that our number one is, as leaders, we need to share our district plan throughout the school year in the way the staff feels part of the whole team, meaning they don't necessarily believe that our school improvement plans are visited enough in their buildings, and that's basically a goal, that they want to get it in front of the staff regularly to continue to connect the individual building plans with the strategic plan. After reviewing this, I attended a day-long event on this with a lot of superintendents from the area who have engaged with this and talked about how they've used it from everything, from seeking feedback on potential referendums to building needs, engaging the community, to redistricting, to asking about the culture in the district and what the community thinks could be an area for improvement. So I see it as an opportunity for us to have real-life, open-ended feedback from the community that's raw and direct. With that, I'll take any questions. Oh, I guess it's important to point out in the memo, it's a, an annual membership that we were able to cover through our Title I grant, so it would be no direct cost to the district to continue to attack dollars. They'll be from Title I fund.
Just this year or every year?
That's our plan moving forward. It's a one-year agreement, though. Our plan moving forward, it would be paid for with grant fund.
Okay. So these responses, I'm assuming are anonymous?
Hundred percent.
So, okay. Would you?
Well, there's a way on the, on, behind the scenes for us to monitor, and you as a user, if you go to the star area, there is, I haven't found it yet, but they tell me there's a way, if you, the three dots in the top-right corner, if there's an inappropriate remark or something that's attacking against any one individual, you as a user can be offended by that, report it. It comes off of whatever one sees, and then we at the district can kinda monitor the exchange as it's going, and then if it's been reported, we can remove it from the exchange.
You can see where that comes from, though, eventually.
We cannot see who writes that, but we have the ability to remove it from what you as joke community see.
So this would be used in the, in the community as well as within our district?
Community, buildings, students, we'd have the opportunity to use it, however. Principals, it's a hundred percent access. We have unlimited users in the district. The agreement would be as far as we want to take it. So at the onset, I see us using it in the strategic planning process this year with Unicom, and I see some opportunities to use it, dabble in it maybe from a district level, asking our teachers some questions. And then in the future, depending on how it goes, and we can see it expanding to building-level principals and students very easily.
Okay.
Does everybody who asks the questions, do they get to vote on all the questions?
Yeah.
Okay.
Even if you gave one response, you can vote on every question and spend as much time diving through. I mean, you can, I've probably spent, we spent probably 15 or 20 minutes at the retreat with just 17 of us, and then I just, I answered, I think starred two of them here tonight, and I'm, you know, I'm still two-thirds of the way through reading it through all of it. So imagine if it opened up to the entire community, you could spend an hour on here, looking at all the responses and voting for how you view it, if you feel chosen. Whatever you can put in, whatever you'd like to get out of it.
I have a question. How would members of the community know that a question is out there? Would it, could it be specifically for a school or a grade level, or where, how would people know and decipher between the questions?
Sure. Well, typically, an exchange is put out with one question at a time. So we would, in a communication, a mass email communication, much like, kinda like what you received tonight in your email, it would be an explanation of what we're trying to achieve with, by asking the question, and a link to join the exchange. It would come from the district, yeah.
Any other questions?
Yeah, it's just a link. Could be emailed out, texted out, put through social media, any way that you, we would send a communication to people, we can give that.
What, what method do you foresee being the most useful?
All of the above.
No, we would, we would post it on Facebook. Here's the, here's the link. I mean, what, the benefits that you get from it is, it's not, we aren't pre-selecting the answers that people give back to us, so we're getting open-ended responses, but you only get 150 characters. So you aren't able to get on a soapbox and go on a two-page rant. You have to be concise with your thinking. And then the community self-monitors in terms of, you're then able to see, well, my thought that was so important to me rose to the top. Okay, I'm on to something. Or my thought got one star. I'm, maybe I'm by myself in the way I think. So there's, the community might learn something about what others in the community think, and then we get really great feedback that we aren't able to get in a, such a concise and organized manner.
Is there a way to limit the responses? Let's say Cheswick is wanting feedback on a question, and you maybe don't, you wouldn't want, like, if you want information about currently what's going on, and you don't want, like, a past story from high school, or could it be targeted to a specific building or grade or?
It could. I mean, we could, we could blast it to individual schools very easily. I mean, you, you couldn't necessarily, if someone shared the link and someone else took the link, it would just then take the crowds, the crowd that is voting on the topic would self-regulate in terms of what's important.
Any other questions? Are we okay moving this forward, then? Us three? Yeah. Okay, then we'll, we'll move that forward to the board meeting, and I'll hand it over to Policy. That would be me. Policy Committee, we just have a few updates to press, so Dr. Rowe, do you want to speak on that, or we can pick it up for questions?
Sure. Nothing specific. A lot of footnote additions and some case law updates. Nothing that stands out.
Okay, with no questions, and I'll move forward to the board.
Okay. All right. We'll move on to item eight, which is the Finance Committee. Now that I have a second member of my committee here, we can actually be functional, which is good. No problem. All right. So we have our purchase orders and press checks and disbursements listed. Is there any questions regarding those items down here? I have no questions. Does anybody else have any questions? Mike, would you show? Okay, if we have no questions concerning that, we'll move that to the board meeting in two weeks. Eight, that too, is the Revenue and Expenditures Report. Mr. Altmaier.
Thank you very much. What you have in front of you is simply the revenue and expenditure reports in detail that we shared with the auditor as a download of our trial balance. We actually had the auditors in this week, and they actually wrapped up fieldwork today. So this is more of an update on that than anything. Everything looked good. And again, you know, I always say this, but Debbie Solomon did a great job with the audit, from preparation to working with the auditors to get them in and out of here as efficiently as possible. So great job again by Debbie. From an operating standpoint, what we're expecting to see once the audit report comes out, we had very minimal audit adjustments, as we, as we have had the last several years. We did have a little surprise with, with revenue. So we are gonna end the year with an operating surplus a little more than the budgeted $273,000 as a result of an increase in property taxes coming in through July 31st. So the revenues that came in actually exceeded prior years by about $900,000 over that time period from a collection standpoint. If you recall, last year, we also had a significant increase in collections for the year, but that was driven by people paying their tax bills early.
Right.
So although not part of that, we are continuing to see increased collections, as evidenced by the amount of money we collected by July 31st this year. So that is driving and will drive the operating surplus that, once we get the audit report, we will share with the board, and we expect to share that in, at the, excuse me, at the October cow. So stay tuned for that. But the good news is, we were tracking with budget with, with, from an operating expense standpoint and from an operating revenue standpoint, we exceeded revenues by approximately $900,000, primarily driven by the property tax revenue side. So with that, good news there, and I'd love to answer any questions if you have any.
Yeah. I just want a quick, so I see employee benefits did end up going over, huh?
Yeah, a little bit. And that was primarily driven by.
Claims?
Yeah, claims. Yeah.
Okay. That's a lot. Yeah, that's been trending.
Yeah.
Upward.
Yeah, upward. And a big piece of that as well was the, the audit adjustment that we make to the accrual account.
Yeah.
For claims incurred but not reported.
Okay.
As well as claims incurred.
Yeah.
But not yet paid. So that accrual went up by several hundred thousand dollars as well, which is also part of why you're seeing the overage there.
No.
Mike?
Nope.
No other questions regarding that? Anybody else have any questions concerning this? Audit numbers, okay. That's fine. We'll move on to eight, that three, which is our monthly fiscal reports. Mr. Altmaier?
Thank you for handing them down.
Thank you very much. Really, the only thing to report on, other than the audit, which I've already talked about a little bit, is ESSA, the Every Student Succeeds Act. And I've talked about this the last few months, is that there is a requirement by August 15th, first year out of, out of the gate on this, that every school district will be required to report site-level per pupil expenditures. So in other words, by building, we would have an operating cost per pupil. So, you know, the requirement is to use pre-audited, or if you have audited numbers. We're using as close as we can to audited numbers, and we actually just finalized a report today that we're handing out. That being said, because this report was just generated today with the system that we have, I'll walk you through what you're looking at here in a second. Over the next two weeks, we're gonna be working with curriculum and HR to better understand some of these numbers, because there's a lot that really goes into obtaining an operating cost per pupil at the site level. So if you look at, you look at the spreadsheet that I've handed out, you've got three main columns there. You've got the site-level per pupil expenditures, so that's the, by the building, per the site-level expenditures. So that's salaries and supplies essentially at each building, okay? Then we have the district centralized per pupil expenditures, which would include things such as health insurance, right, the substitute teacher line, operations and maintenance, transportation costs, special ed costs. So a lot of different costs that are centralized at the district level, but they're centralized and then decentralized to the, to the site, to the buildings, whether it's based on square footage of the building, that's operations and maintenance, based on the number of special ed students we have. So a lot of our special ed expenditures were allocated to the buildings based on the number of IEPs that we have per building, for instance. And a lot of the other expenditures that we have, health insurance, for instance, would be allocated to the site level based on enrollment. So those are the three primary allocations that we have by the centralized cost, and those same exist, would, excuse me, wouldn't exist. At the pure pupil expenditures by site level, that's all allocated, obviously, on a, on just an enrollment basis. So it's the sum of those two components that make up the total per pupil expenditures. And as you could see, you could see the various differences between Legee and Cheswick and Martin and the high school. And so a lot of that is driven by, it could be classroom size, it could be the tenures of the teachers.
Yeah.
It could be a lot of different factors, and there is approximately a $1,400 difference here between the highest and lowest. But we're, over the next two weeks, we're gonna kinda, you know, make sure that these make sense to us.
Right.
And we're gonna kinda dig a little deeper into each one of these. And if anything materially changes by the time we meet at the next board meeting, I will share those with you, because these will ultimately be reported on the school report card on a site-level basis.
Yeah. I personally don't find this very useful, but it's.
So it's from the, it was from the L N State Board of Ed. So you just described how you had various different allocation methodologies you had to go through to come up with these. Was that methodology provided by the L N State Board of Ed, or did you have to come up with that yourself? No, it's, well, it's a great question. So the tool, there is a tool that was provided by ISBE that we could have used to download our chart of accounts to help us in the process of creating what we have here. We use Forecast Five, and Forecast Five also has a tool that allowed us and enabled us to do the same. Whether it's flexibility district by district is the allocation method.
Okay.
So in other words, some schools may allocate every single cost, all of the centralized district costs on an enrollment basis.
Just by, yeah.
Maybe, maybe they're not gonna use the number of IEPs per building. Maybe they're not gonna use square footage, because they don't have the exact square footage per building.
Right.
You know, we tried to use what we had, where we thought it made sense.
Yeah, okay.
So there's a lot of flexibility district by district to come up with their own allocation methods, yet the tool, whether it's Forecast Five or ISBE, is very similar to what you're looking at, which would break out site level versus district level arriving at a total.
Right. So then the other question I'd have is, if you had to estimate the amount of hours it took you guys to compile this information, what would you, what would your estimate of that time be?
A long time. We've been working, well, we've been working with this several months just to better understand the requirements. We've been working with the Forecast Five tool. And what do you think, Debbie, 40 hours? So that's one day, and we've spent several days.
I would expect.
We went to a half-day training on it, so.
Yeah, I'd expect you're up to hundreds to possibly hundreds of hours getting this stuff.
Both of us combined, it's easily a week or two. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. I'm just trying to.
Yeah. And the comparability district by district from a benchmarking perspective, as I said, as you said, it's tough to benchmark against other districts, because we're all using different allocation methods.
Yeah. There's no consistency amongst them, so it's.
Yeah. But it is a requirement.
That's why I say, I know it's a requirement.
It is out there for the community to see if they do wanna see it. We were, I was very pleased to see that we, we really don't have a significant variance between buildings. The majority of these variances, we feel, are probably tenure-related, as well as, you know, maybe class size-related.
Right.
So, and that's what we'll be looking into.
All kinds of factors that could give you discrepancies or variances between buildings. So. All kinds of factors that give you discrepancies or variances between buildings. So, anybody else have any questions?
Just a quick clarification, the federal column, federal expense? What's the, I'm not sure I'm catching the meaning of that.
Though, yeah, those are expenses that we incur related to federal grants. And that's a straight-line number, $189 per pupil. That is straight-line based on the amount of expenses we had from a federal standpoint.
Okay.
No, you answered all my questions before I could get to them. Sorry. No.
I'm a hard question. Yeah, there's a lot there, but I think the board needs to be aware that this is out there. It's on the website. And the community will be able to see this next year.
Okay. Anyone else have any questions on that? I'd like to fire. Okay. And then there's our activity fund report. Any questions related to that report? Okay. With that, we can move on to building and grounds, Mr. Troy.
Okay, item nine dot one, O and M updates. It's been a busy month. Anything that, I'm sure there's a couple of things in here to highlight that caught my eye.
Thank you, Paul. Solar, not a tremendous amount of news since the last time we met, but net zero metering, we've got it in writing approved, but still haven't gone through construction review with the villagers. Projects, remaining projects, we had a pretty good midsummer after a pretty rainy early summer. McCaven roof has left to be restored, the flat roof areas. Conley was about 95% complete as of last Saturday. Leggie and Heinemann lots need landscaping after the asphalt pavement, but the pavement and the use of the pavement itself is pretty good. We'll have a little bit of perimeter disruption before school starts, but we should be done on time. Asphalt seal coating, there's simply a couple of little lines to finish up at Chesapeake Martin. That was a very, very complicated project. Site lighting at Leggie, we need to put the poles up and turn them on. That's supposed to happen next week. Other than that, I'm very happy to say that we got a lot of things done this summer. Been running around a lot, but I think, I think it's turned out pretty well. A lot of changes at the high school, in the little here bits and corners of little spaces, but be happy to answer any questions.
What's the progress on the roof in this building? I saw there were people working up there.
When I walk down here, they're pounding away.
Yeah.
When they open up something, they stay here till it's closed, so in case it rains. So they're good about that. They, that company was awarded shingle roof replacements at this building and the high school. I asked them to stop a couple of days ago because this is the ideal week to be at the high school and the minimum traffic, the annual week where HSA says slow down. So they are, they finished that. It was a two-day job and they're back. And they tell me they expect when they're, when they're, when they leave here this Saturday, they should be very close to done. There might be a little metal flashing to do, but that's about it.
Thank you. Any questions from the committee or the board?
I just have a quick question. Is the incubator, the incubator room ready to go?
Tomorrow, they're going to paint the walls and the glass is going to go in and the little interior cubicles we're building. And we got to put the door locks on and we got to put vinyl base on next week and we're done.
Any additional questions? All right. Thank you, Mr. Rancosik. Nine dot two, summer 2020 O and M deferred maintenance projects.
Thank you. This is a report I bring to the board once a year. I appreciate the opportunity to bring it in in August. It rewards us with getting some very competitive, nice bids for the, for the coming year. We usually, when we get this out in the fall, we've got contractor, contractors that are interested in filling their book of work over the winter for next summer. And it's been very rewarding to us, I think, price-wise and quality of work. So I really appreciate that we're continuing that process. What we do here is, first, I want to give you a look at the categorically, what kinds of things we're looking at coming down the road. This is a living document. These are things, this is only the tenure portion of it. I have a database I try to maintain of life cycle on the material and equipment. And mind you, these are expected average life cycles. So it's a living document. Every facility, use of its facility has different wear and tear. And the equipment longevity is, it needs to remain flexible. It's just a prediction estimate. So you'll see over the years, this does change around. But, you know, our big-ticket items in the next 10 years will be asphalt, as you can see, the biggest one, which is sorely needed in a few places, I'd like to think. Roofs, which we're doing very well on, we're going to take a year off. Rooftop unit HVAC equipment, coupled on the list for this year. And floor finish, we're having a little pinch this coming year to align with Mr. Altmeier's projections for budget. So we're going to take a year break on that. For the coming year, if you look on the by-year sort, it's after the categorical sort, you'll see in FY '20, we're looking at proposing about 2.975 million expenditures for capital replacement projects, which is not far off of our average. You'll note that our average, if you've been, if you've been looking at this report over the years, it's going down over 10 years. And that is because we are going through the life cycle on some of the bigger ticket items, like roofs where, you know, the end is in sight, if you will, and some of the other things. And we are also building a replacement of facilities in such a fashion now to reduce our expenditure the next life cycle, like our asphalt where we're doing a full-up reclamation underneath and our cost for future asphalt replacement, which that material itself has about a 15-year predicted life. So down the road, it's going to reward us with expenses that are going to be less. We don't have to worry about the gravel base in future years theoretically. And roof replacements, we will be just recoding them. We won't be replacing them or getting more intrusive into the existing systems, just recoding them. So, so it's rewarding us by making that investment now in future year reductions, I'd like to think. For the coming year particularly, what's, what's being proposed is the asphalt parking lot replacement at Conley-McCaven and the bus lot between the two. We could probably sit here and debate, do we do those? Do we do Marlowe? What do we do? They're all, we did some repairs at Marlowe to give us a little more time, I'd like to think, there. But we have some traffic issues at Conley-McCaven we would like to try to address as best we can. We've had a traffic engineer involved. And you'll see in, on page seven of the report, that there is a line inserted there for enhancement option, traffic, number one, traffic engineer suggestion. I'd like to think that will come in a little under that budget. It's conservative for those enhancements. We think it will improve the traffic flow on the property. The principals have been involved. The administration's been involved, security, transportation. So, you know, we'd like to think that there's a consensus of the board that this project that go forward will get, hit the ground running right after this, this meeting to enlist the engineers to start designing things and so we can get out the bid. Roofing, like I said, we're going to take a rest. Rooftop units, we're suggesting two at McCaven for replacement. We're having some minor issues with. We've been able to maintain them, but it's starting to cost a little much. And some building envelope improvements I brought to board a few months ago, an agreement with engineer that I asked for permission to start a partnership and start working with on a consulting basis to find ways to repair things and put specs together. And that would begin the first phase of that work. So what we're looking for, be happy to answer any questions about any particular things on the list for the FY '20 year or anything in these reports, of course. But we're looking for the consensus of the board. It's not a formal approval at this time because the formal approval would come when we bring you the bids for those projects. At this time, it's just, we'd like to hear from you if you've got any concerns with moving forward any of these, because we're going to start rolling up our sleeves and working on the designs intensively and get these things out to bid. And we'd like to not invest that time there if it's something that the board feels uncomfortable with doing. So I'd be happy to answer any questions about the report. Any questions from the committee?
Yeah, I have one. Looking at the breakout between all the years, I noticed the last three years, which I'm sure are the hardest to predict, there is a significant drop-off in the budget. And I think you kind of explained it by, we're being proactive and some of the big-ticket items are coming up in the next few years. But how realistic do you think that drop-off is? Or as we get closer to those years, are those numbers going to shoot up?
Well, I'm glad you brought that up because there's something I feel to say. You also noticed that in year '21, '22, '23, '24, the numbers are much better.
That's another way of asking the same question.
Yeah. And, and what's in there are things that have predicted lives that we've been kicking the can down the road on for a number of years already, like the condensers on the roofs that provide cooling for all the classroom spaces at the middle schools. Rooftop units, you know, we're creeping along. There's a whole lot of roof, there's 22 rooftop units in the school district that serve large spaces in the buildings. And we're creeping along, doing a couple of them. We did a couple two years ago. And so those are things that as we come upon the year, we can look at it and say, well, we're doing all right. We really don't need to do that. What I like to think of is year two through 10 is just something for us that you put together so you get an overall tenure look at. What do you need to budget over time to preserve your facilities? And we can make judgments calls on a year-to-year basis. What do we push back? I'd like to think that if, if we did a good job in the fiscal, in the, I'm sorry, the O and M office, we could deliver to the fiscal office a balanced expenditure every year. And that will be our goal, is try to keep somewhat of a balance. It's, it's realistic, I believe, that what we're predicting down to those years is probably going to be about there. Why is it going down so much? Some of the other things, when we're picking replacements of material, building materials right now, we're also looking for things that have a longer life cycle. When the facilities were first built, we put a 15-year shingle on. Now we're putting a 30-year shingle on. And we'll get a better life cycle. The return on investment over time will be better.
Thank you. Additional questions?
I did have a question. I took a look in advance, two years, the synthetic turf replacement in 2022.
Yeah.
How is our field holding up today, looking ahead those two years?
Very well. I, I think we'll kick that can down the road, best I can tell. Actually, last year, I got a phone call in about March from the manufacturer saying they wanted to come out at their expense and do some restorative work to the material. Didn't cost us a penny. I was in shock. They said they visited the site. They thought that we could use some inserting of glue in the backing. That's, I don't want to get, unless you want me to, it'll take a while to go through the details of how it's done.
I'd love to, but I don't think anybody else will want to, so.
If you want to go offline with that, that's cool.
That's fine.
The, so they did some restorative work on it, put the fill back in, which is something we should do every three or four years possibly to keep that material clean, that's, you know, the little rubber inserted in there. They did it for us for free. So I looked at that thing getting a lot longer life. Some of our peers that I, you know, invested a lot of time with when we were first putting it in to learn about it, have, seem to have, according to what I hear from them, more issues with contaminants going in there. And that means you have to pull that fill out more often and put it back in and you become more abrasive to the material. We don't have that issue as much. I think our users of the field are doing a good job not to contaminate that as much as some of our peers. So kudos to them. But I think we'll get more years out of that. That's the predicted life, what I put in there.
Right. And then the other question, this is kind of stepping ahead a little bit as well. With the fine arts addition, what kind of things are going into that project to make sure that that life cycle of items there, it's, it's going to probably be a 10-, 15-year life cycle on that addition. So it'll probably be off this calendar. But how does that incorporate into this as well? Or has that been baked in yet?
Well, the vision of, you know, the thing that I think of most first as they roll, and I debated that for a little bit. But we could have went and put a traditional older, you know, version of the roofs, and I say older, I mean, the kind of roof system we put in when we built these buildings. Or we could put in what we're doing now, which is this higher-end coating over the top, where you don't have to get, in that kind of installation, you could just top it off with a coating, you know? But we would still have to put that first roof in. And I said to myself, why would we not wait and get the warranty years out of that first installation roof system, which I figure, pardon, I think it's 10 on this one?
Okay.
Why would we not take advantage of that 10 years, defer that added expense of putting that 20-year white coating on there? And it's such a small area that when, you know, I predict down the road, I'm forecasting that, you know, take it about 20% at a time of what's left over a period of five years, that to accomplish full restoration at the high school will then, which will then complete a full cycle of restoration for roofing systems in the school district. I thought it would be a good idea to take the value of that tenure warranty and let it ride.
Okay.
Other things, Paul, I got to tell you, there's nothing out, we did look at the rooftop units. You'll hear more about that probably when we're talking about that on August 15th. But we look to put in the kind of systems that we recently installed with the replacements at Conley, which have served us very well and are more improved, you know, less leakage and things like that.
Thank you. Okay, any, any additional questions for nine dot two? Do you need some guidance from us on this?
I just want to hear that anything that's on the radar for FY '20 on page seven, if you have a concern that we should maybe not get the ball rolling on any investment of time and design. And I pretty much enumerated on the cover page, the big-ticket items we're going to jump on right away, that are going to take some time and consultants involved to put specs together. The asphalt replacement project for Conley-McCaven, the rooftop units at McCaven, and working on the building envelope issue, start the first phase of that. And it doesn't say a lot of what about that. As we've been working with consultants to prioritize that, my first one would be the curtain walls on the perimeter of the middle schools. I've had some leaks reported and we have to dig into that. We're actually going to tear into one in a couple weeks, in a couple days, I mean. And with a forensic engineer staying there to understand what the fix will be before we can even design a bid spec. But we just want to hear if the board has any concern with going forward with any of those things informally here today.
Okay. Any concerns with the forecasted list of projects? Just for reference, the FY '19 project list, where was that number in reference to what we're looking at for '20?
Much bigger.
That's what I thought. I just didn't remember what.
Well, I, and I could, you know, if you want to wait about 60 seconds, I can pull it up here, but...
I'm okay.
It's, it's, I think it's more than double.
Okay. Thank you. Any concerns or questions from the board? Hearing nothing, I think that's good enough to go forward then. Question? Okay. Hearing nothing, Doug, I think that's, that should be okay. Go ahead and proceed then. No objections. And then nine dot three, fine arts addition, construction update.
We did open the bids about a week ago. We've been, Walden Lamp and the school district are investing time into evaluate those bids and understand what, what the bidders were understanding and what's in their bids. We're not prepared at this time to bring recommendations to the board on what to award. We've got one bid we haven't yet completely evaluated. That's, we couldn't pull it together with the designers and the bidder and our construction manager and architect, I'm sorry to tell you. And we also want our performing arts center and management team involved to understand what we've got for the electrical bid. And we'll be bringing that together tomorrow morning. Our outlook is to have the information and be prepared to make recommendations to the board on the 15th of August, regular board meeting.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the board?
Well, the only question I'd have is, I understand not all of those, but where, based on the ones that look like will be awarded, where is this tally coming up with what's estimated?
It's...
Favorable, right?
I wish I could say that.
No. Not?
Well, that's what we want to dig into at that, that meeting that's scheduled for tomorrow is the, is one of the bids that's still, we have a lot of questions, as do some of the bidders, about what they bid on that we think may be, we'll be able to come closer to where we were expecting to be.
Okay.
So again, it's, it's too preliminary and there's so many unknowns, why we didn't want to come with that information.
Yeah, I think minus the one we're interviewing tomorrow, we're tracking, you know, right on what we, what we figured. It's just the one tomorrow we've got to dig into. on what we figured. It's just the one tomorrow we've got to dig into.
Okay. Any additional questions then?
All right, that's it for buildings and grounds. Mr. Fleck, it's all you, or who's left? Did we skip somebody?
All right, well, then I'll bring it home. I guess we've gone through everything else. It's 6:47. I will make a motion to go into closed session for the items listed in the agenda. Is there a second? Second from Ms. Melendi. Let's have a roll call.
Mr. Fleck?
Yes.
Mr. Garen?
Yes.
Mr. Gentry?
Yes.
Mr. Quagliano?
Yes.
Mrs. Melendi?
Yes.
Mr. Troy?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyerino?
Yes.
Okay, we're in closed session. Thank you.